Oh, we have people. No?
None.
Okay, so at the end of the meeting. Okay, thank you. Okay, if not, we're gonna move on.
I, uh, this is not on the budget. This is the, this is on the consent agenda. I sent an email to Ralph this afternoon and instead of pulling anything from the consent agenda, he agreed that he would do an administrative edit on the minutes to add a bullet about Mr. Larson summarizing the meeting with the Belfont area high school students with Representative G D Thompson that was missing off of the minutes. And he said he could just do that without us pulling it from the agenda.
We have a couple other things before we get there, but we'll get to that, okay?
Yeah, I'm just saying that.
Yep, alright.
He told me I needed to say that so that we could not do that later. That's all I'm doing.
Okay. Next is communications, written. We have, um, in your packet, we had a PennDOT responses to questions on the mill race and the West High Street Bridge project, um, and zoning changes to the first floor central business district. Any questions or comments on that?
Yes.
Joanna.
I have one for each of them. In the, on the mill race project, in the letter from PennDOT, Michelle May suggested the Borough contact Ryan Collins, their PennDOT's Highway Safety Manager, to ask about allowing a crosswalk at Dunlop Street. During the Harb meeting last May, there, you noticed in Gina's report that there was a discussion about this due to the high pedestrian traffic at this intersection. The Waterfront Development Group did say that, just like our comments, they would be interested in having a stamped sidewalk at Dunlop Street. So I was just wondering, have we made any disconnection yet?
We have not. I wanted council to see the comments to start with, so after tonight, we'll reach out to PennDOT.
Okay. And on the zoning changes, Catherine Spielbogel is one that wrote this letter, um, about, and one of the items she asked about was having the Borough implement the wayfinding project. I understand that, um, the conversation during the, um, design phase, that the implementation would cost probably another $50,000. So I was wondering if we could put on the goal creation for the 2025 is to do a grant proposal for this signage to be implemented into 2026. It wouldn't affect the budget we were working on tonight, but it would actually make it a, make it go forward, because we've been, we've been sitting back for about four or five years now.
We can do that, sure.
Thank you.
Next item is the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered routine and will be acted upon by one single motion. I need a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second, Dan.
Discussion or questions? We got the one from Joanna earlier. You have that down, what she wanted, the minutes?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Any others? Alright, excellent. We're gonna move on then to, wait a minute, we have to vote.
(laughing).
I always forget that part. Here we go. Yes.
Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton.
Yes.
Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Cedric.
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy.
Yes.
Thank you, Barbara. Next is reports. We begin tonight with our very own Mayor Johnson and his report.
Thank you, President Bernier. Chief Whitmer and I have a very special presentation this evening.
So proud of you.
Yes, good evening. The mayor and I are proud to, to be before you tonight. We're here to recognize an officer for a job well done. I'm here to recognize Officer Sean Luce. Welcome up, Sean. For his part in saving the life of a local man. On November 2nd, 2024, at a Penn State football game, Pennsylvania State Troopers App and Mylan observed a man collapse at the Wilco ticket gate. The troopers immediately called for emergency medical services to assist them, and they began CPR. Officer Luce, upon hearing the call, was close to, was close to the scene and responded with an AED. When Officer Luce arrived on scene, he observed the troopers performing CPR. They connected the AED to the patient, which only saved his life, brought him back. Uh, the, the patient was then transported to the Mountain Indian Medical Center for further care. The patient has since recovered and appeared at the following home football game on November 30th and stood with Officer Luce and all the medical staff that saved his life that day. I'd also like to take a moment to recognize all the other medical staff and the Pennsylvania State Troopers that were there as well. Trooper App, Trooper Mylan, all medical personnel at the stadium that day, including hospital staff, EMS personnel, paramedics, and ambulance services. I also recognize them for a job well done as well. I'd also like to mention that Officer Luce has also dedicated his life, not only to law enforcement for the last 26 years, but to the medical field as a paramedic. He's our department CPR, first aid, AED instructor. He's also cardiac life support instructor. This whole incident is a great example of what we do on a daily basis. Not only do we arrest people, not only do we just give tickets, we're first responders, because we are, most of the time, the first people there on scene. And because of his actions that day, along with the troopers and medical staff, they saved that man's life. So we're here, I'm here to recognize, I'm proud of him. I have a pin for him. Mayor Johnson has a certificate he wants to read to him.
Thank you. Officer Luce, we have a life-saving award is hereby presented to Officer Sean Luce for his role in the life-saving efforts administered on November 2nd, 2024 during a Penn State football game that involved rapid defibrillation and successfully saved a life. Thank you, Sean, for everything that you do.[1117.72][1118.82](applause).
Talking about CPR, huh?
You wanna say anything?
Again, thank you.
Tell them why you thought you were coming to me, Sean.
As I attended the workshop, I figured I either did a horrible job and needed to build on what I talked about, or I needed to go into further because the way the chief explained it, it sounded like he was getting me involved in the teaching community CPR. So, with a little bit of a rue, and didn't make sense why my wife wanted to come watch me talk about CPR, but then she said, "Well, you can take me to dinner afterwards," so. But this isn't a testament to what the training and everything does. I, I have dedicated both sides of my life to this, and seeing the outcome is a positive thing, that the officer's being prepared, but the recognition that the troopers did. It was, it was, everything worked as it should, so thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.[1186.32][1186.32](applause).
Not staying for the meeting?
No, I was told I was supposed to.
I don't understand.
After I spoke. He's thinking of all the dinner.
Okay.
Hey, let me get my cup.
Yeah. See you guys, thank you.
Thank you.
See you, Sean. Alright, next is our Chief Whitmer. He submitted his report. He's here, if anyone has any questions, or Chief, if you have anything to add, go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
Real quick question. So, Chief, in your Borough or monthly activity report, it, it says arrests, and then we have SRO. Just, this is just a curiosity thing. I, I could've taken you aside here and asked you.
The SRO, who are you involved?
Right, right. So, it says four arrests in the month. Is, so in the arrest column, is, are those four included in that? For total number, like the total is 22, are four of those from the SRO school arrests?
Correct, four.
Okay. So that, those totals all go into this column? Oh, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions for our chief? Chief, do you have anything else that you wanted to add?
Um, no, I think I've covered everything. I appreciate the time, but we're, we're ready.
Yeah, how's everything going otherwise? Good? Have you got a first month yet under your belt as official chief?
Not yet.
Not yet, alright. We're glad to have you. Okay, next is Gina, Ms. Thompson is in the house.
Good evening, council. It's been a while. I just wanted to come to briefly give you a recap of the, um, the updated Belfont Borough Historic District Guidelines. They are finalized, and they're under an action item under new business in your packet. I just wanted to separate them out so they didn't get shuffled in with the rest of the OCA, um, reports. But I just wanted to take a quick minute here to publicly thank Landmarks SGA, which was the consulting firm that worked on the review or the updated guidelines, also Frank Grumbine from PHMC, and of course, Harb. All three of these entities worked really hard. We had several drafts, looking through, making sure that it was kind of fine-tuned and something that could be used for years to come. As I've already mentioned and is in your packet, this is just a guiding document to help Harb, myself, and residents to know, you know, what kinds of things they should be looking for when they're looking to do projects in the historic district. So it breaks down, you know, existing structures, new structures. It offers alternate materials, all of those things. And the hope with this document as a whole will be obviously available on the website, but then maybe taking pieces of it and doing some educational material and, and programming material to help be able to educate folks in the historic district and outside the historic district on our, our wonderful historic district that we have here. And I just wanted to mention that when Jessica was working on the guidelines, and she came several times to Belfont, obviously, while she was working on them, she would remark often how we have one of the most well-preserved historic districts in Pennsylvania, at least in Pennsylvania. And I think we should take a lot of great pride in that and continue to try to make an effort and a commitment to historic preservation. And she was, she was very much impressed with our, with our downtown and our historic residential district. So that's all. As I said, this is under new business for an action item, but I just wanted to speak to it here. If you have any questions, you're welcome to ask, but. Alright, thank you, council.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. The other reports that were submitted in your packet, does anyone have any questions or comments for Mr. Stewart? Relative his report? If not, we'll move on to liaison reports. They were all submitted for your review. Okay, Mr. Brackville?
Okay, under Spring Creek Watershed, there, there were meeting minutes left at the table tonight. Those were for November meeting, and that was a member meeting. Belfont Fire Department, uh, we're, we're kind of messed up with their, with their minutes because we, we go one month and then we skip a month, so we don't, we don't get it as, as supposed to be. So this one, the one that's gonna be coming up will be the January 2020, 2025 meeting and during that month. It'll be the fourth, fourth Thursday of that month, that, that should come out. And, uh, Center Region Council canceled their meeting, and that's it.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments relative to reports? I think so. Okay, moving on to current and old business. First item is the 2025 council meeting schedule proposed. These are the considered dates for our meetings. Authorities and board commissions will be doing the same. I need a motion and a second to approve our council meeting schedule for 2025.
So moved.
Second, Brackville.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay, go ahead and vote.
Okay, Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton.
Yes.
Ms. Dan, yes. Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Cedric.
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy.
Yes.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the tax ordinance. Tax ordinance number 12162024-01, asking for a motion and a second to approve this tax ordinance.
So moved.
Thank you.
I'll second, Brackville.
Discussion or questions? Hearing none, go ahead and vote.
Mr. Bernier.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Clayton.
Yes.
Ms. Dan, yes. Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Purnell.
Yes.
Ms. Cedric.
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy.
Yes.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the Belfont Borough Fee Schedule. I need a motion and a second to approve the 2025 Belfont Borough Fee Schedule, as it was presented with any modification.
I think you skipped the budget.
Budget's next.
Oh, I skipped the budget? That doesn't really need to, does it, Johnson? We could've come back to that. 2025 budget is the next item. I need a motion and a second to approve the 2025 budget.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? Johnson.
Um, I have a comment and.
Oh, right.
Let's see, I don't know how to do this. I'd like to make a motion to modify the budget in regards to the CADA, the additional money that we voted to approve. voted to approve. It's an additional, mm, now, 36,500? What?
I understood it to be 35,000.
Close enough. 35,000. So, I'm making that motion to amend the budget as it's being proposed tonight. So, I'm looking for a second to my amendment, and then we can have discussion.
Which is to remove the 35,000-
Yes, yes.
-from our budget that we were going to propose-
Yes.
-for CADA. Okay. That's his motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it. Dan?
Questions or comments before we vote?
Yeah, okay. So, I'm still not clear what this money is going to be used for, okay? At this moment, the way I understand it, Spring Township is not participating. Benner Township is out in June of 2025. That's not true?
We don't know yet.
Okay. And we are out. We sent a letter, noticed that we would not be participating in June of 2025. Is that correct?
We sent the letter, but we have kept the door open. We are in communication with CADA to look into continuing service after-
Okay.
-July 1st of 2025.
So, at this moment, we are out?
Unless something changes.
Unless something changes, right?
The door is open with all three municipalities.
I get that. I understand that. So, until I see a response from Spring and Benner that they are participating in this discussion, and the way it works is if Bellefonte, this committee goes to Geisinger and asks them for money to fund the bus service, that would go to Spring Township. Spring Township would be the distributor of that money because the contracted services would go through Spring Township, not through Bellefonte Borough. So, you would have to convince Spring Township and Benner to remain in. Spring is out right now, as I understand it. So, until, I'm not even sure why we're, I guess the 30,000 is to keep us in until June of 2025 that we're approving right now. Is that correct?
I'm not sure.
The 2025 budget, we're, in the budget, it says 30,500 or something. So, if we, and then you wanted an additional 35,000 on top of that for, that I don't quite understand why, but what does the 30,500 go to? Does that extend our contract into June of 2025?
Beyond that.
Only if Council approves it. Right now, we have, like you said, the Borough has given notice that we're done at the June 30th of '25.
Yes.
30,000 is about what we spend in a year.
Yes.
So, we're only going to spend maybe 15 of that.
Okay.
Now, if Council says we're done, there's no way around it, we'll have some extra funding in that category-
Okay.
-at the 30,000 level.
I understand that. Now, that's a little clearer to me. So, if Spring doesn't choose to become a contracted service, or if Benner doesn't choose to be a contracted service, we can't take people to Spring Township. We can't take them to Benner Township, only if they're participating.
That's correct.
Even though Geisinger may say, "Here's so much money," that doesn't cover all the costs.
Right, we understand that.
You're laying this cost on the residents of Bellefonte Borough. The county does contribute. The county is in favor of having people come to the Borough and work. Well, they're giving this, as I understand it, $7,000. That doesn't cover all of our expenses. I think it's an unreasonable burden on our taxpayers to add, especially add, this 35,000 to what we already have, until there is something in place to demonstrate the need for it. So, I am not voting in favor. I'm voting for my amendment. And also, all of these properties in Bellefonte that are not taxed, we don't get any money for those. Benner and Spring have growth occurring. They should be contributing more to this. Anyhow, so that's the reason why. I support public transportation for people, but I don't think our residents should bear the brunt of this. It needs to be shared equally with all those being serviced.
Go ahead, Deb. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Doug. I understand where you're coming from. The monies that we ask to be added to this line item in the budget, we specifically ask to be come from reserves and not directly from taxes. So, any tax increase that we just voted on for the new, the tax ordinance that we just voted on, does not include anything for CADA. The funding that we've requested specifically comes from the reserves. So, if we need it, it's there. If we don't need it, it won't.
I understand that. But this is an estimate of the reserves. This isn't etched in stone. If there's a major expense between now and then to the year, that's six, some of that 60,000 will go away. The other thing is, we have some big projects coming up in 2025. The new elementary school and the Parkview Heights light that's been requested for more than eight years is going to have to be funded somewhere. This sound system in this room is absolutely ridiculous. Folks in the audience probably can't hear most of our conversation. So, when I have reserve money, I'm going to hope that it goes to something that will benefit us. More, in my opinion, more important at this moment than supplying funds that we may or may not use.
Okay. I would like to point out that the second highest revenue stream for the Borough after property taxes is the earned income tax. We depend on our employed residents to fund that line item. Our residents need to get to and from work.
Yes, and I would like to know that percentage that uses the transportation service in Bellefonte. In Bellefonte. It's like I sent you the email asking the 14 folks who quit Giant, I was interested in knowing if they terminated themselves because of a better job, because they could find transportation somewhere closer to their work, or they just chose that this job was not the job that they were looking for.
Well, that would be a personnel question for Giant.
Well, but when you stated it, it sounded as though they resigned because of no transportation. That's the way it sounded to me.
And that's what we had understood when we talked to the managers of Giant. He said, "Because of the change in the transit, they lost 10% of their employees."
Nothing's changing in our relationship with CADA till June. Is that correct?
That is correct. That's correct.
So, nothing's changed in Bellefonte's transportation relationship with CADA yet. The motion is on the table, and it's been seconded, to not spend the additional funds, whatever exactly the number is, 30, 35,000, to fund CADA in our 2025 budget.
So, can-
So, let's try and just keep the discussion to that. Does anybody have any comment or question relative Doug's motion?
I have a question for Doug, if I could.
Go ahead.
Sorry, Barbara.
Okay, okay. First of all, it's not money we're spending. It's money we're transferring from another account just to put in the CADA slot in our budget, correct, at this point?
It would be coming from reserves.
Reserves, right.
If needed. So, we're not taking away from another line item in the budget.
Right. Mike, and I've thought a lot about this, and I really like your passionateness about the public transportation, and I also think it's very important. But I feel like we should leave that money in the reserve fund, since this has been, there have been so many changes with CADA, and I know you're working with them, and I appreciate that. So, I'm hoping something can be worked out. But I would prefer not to move that money at this point into the public transportation slot.
Mr. Brackville?
Doug, you had said it was $35,000. So, if, and we didn't pay, as far, I heard somebody tell me tonight that CADA came up, I think it was Ralph, we were talking about it, and CADA decided they would just go ahead and put those extra hours in at no cost. Is that right, Ralph?
Yes. Instead of running two buses, they run one, and they double the hours. That's how they were able to double the hours.
That would get us to June.
To June, yes, unless we hear differently.
Then I am good with what we're talking about.
Okay.
Supporting Doug's motion.
Other comments? Joanne?
Yes. Public transit is a priority for both local residents and businesses. In our budget book, there is, the goal's a priority-based budgeting, identify programs that offer the highest value and continue to provide funding for them while reducing service levels, divesting and potentially eliminating lower-value services. The Transit Task Force is working to find solutions to our loss of CADA last July, which if achieved, would help achieve our first goal of the stamp's priority-based budget, to increase revenues for long-term sustainability by securing funding to supplement the Borough budget. As Deb said, that we need, economically, people need transportation. Our members of our community at the lower end of the economic scale need some kind of subsidies, and the CADA was very, very expensive, which is why CADA said that they had to eliminate it. We are, as we said, reaching out to the business community and other groups, talking to the CCMPO, Center County Transportation, CADA, and lobbying our elected officials to expand operational funding for public transit in the future budgets. We have so far had representative from Senator Dusha's office and from Representative Bennings' office coming in and saying that they think that this plan to put some additional money is basically putting skin in the game to make us, allow us to go forward. It is critical for the health, welfare, and food security for members of our community who have to rely on public transit for either regular or periodic transportation around Bellefonte and Center Region for work, healthcare, and shopping. It is a definite priority in our, for us. It is in our master regional, Inter Valley Regional Master Plan. And I did talk to Tom Fontaine when I ran into him last week, and he said that he thought it was a very good idea that we provide some additional funding so that we could create, he said, here in State College, they have had concerns about people who live there in the Center Region having problems getting here because of the reduced service. So, it works as a whole system by putting this additional money in it through the reserves, which isn't increasing any tax base, to assist everybody. We are meeting with, we're in process of doing a doodle with CADA. Ralph is going to be in on that meeting. We're trying to decide exactly who should be there before I actually send out the doodle. And on January 22nd, CADA is going to have a community conversation. Time and place to be determined about what the programs people would like to have going forward for the next year. That's when, we had the January 30th meeting last year. We had another one middle of the year. This will be the third one with CADA to find out what it is. And meanwhile, this meeting that we're talking, is going to discuss possible alternatives and questions with CADA. By having that money in the budget, we have more clout to talk to CADA about fixing the problem so that we have a better program going forward. Thank you.
Go ahead, Rita.
I'm just wondering, if we're suggesting to take this money out of reserves, and it's in there, why does it have to be moved now? If we find we need it later, can we move it later?
That's a good point, Rita. When this is in place, when you have a plan, I don't think there's anybody at this table that disagrees with your dissertation. But when it's in place, then we can reconsider the funding.
As I understand budgeting is-
Okay, let's focus on the motion that's in force. Does anybody have any question about the motion that's in front of us? Any other comments? We've had millions of discussions-
This is a relation, this is a relation to removing the-
Let's see if anybody else has any comments relative this topic.
I think it's important that everybody has a chance to speak, and maybe Rita would like to go a little further with hers.
I'm just wondering, is there an answer to that question? Could it be moved later if we determine that we need that money and it's there?
That's what I was trying to say.
That's a Ralph's question, or?
Why don't you let Joanne speak?
Okay, so the answer's yes. Just a yes or no. Can we move it later? Yes?
Not according to state laws, I understand it, because you have to have the balanced budget. We would have to reopen the budget in order to put additional money from the reserve next year. That's how I understand that. Is that not correct?
It's cleaner to do it this way. We set the budget. It can, we do move money from one line item to another line item. That's been done. We're not changing the overall budget. We're not adding any new taxes. So, it's preferred to have it ironed out now so there aren't any changes later. But in the event a change need to be made, what we're talking about could be done.
The money that's in the reserves is all money from tax dollars, correct?
That is correct. It's the same real estate tax dollars, but it's just reserve money.
And that money, Mr. President, can be used for anything. You know, let's say we have a major water break between now and the 1st of the year.
I'm just clarifying.
And that's an estimate, too.
Nobody said anything about raising taxes. They just said about using the tax dollars that are already in there.
We are using tax dollars, yes.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second to have the 30,000 removed. I'm just trying to keep up with this. Is that correct? Or 30-some thousand removed from the budget? That's the motion on the table?
Yes, it's 35,000.
I know I've been sitting here for a year, but I still don't understand what we do next.
At our last meeting. And I made the motion to remove that additional amount, not the total.
And Barb seconded that. So, your people would be voting on the amendment to withdraw the 35,000 from the public transit line item.
Anybody else have any comment? If not, we're going to vote. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bernier?
Yes.
Mr. Brackville?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
No.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
No.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Cedric?
No.
Ms. Tosti Vacy?
No.
Yeses are five, nos are four.
We have to vote on the approval, yes or no, to approve the budget with the amendment completely?
Yes, that's correct, yes.
And now, we're voting on the budget with the amendment completely. Any questions or discussions on that before we vote?
Okay, Mr. Bernier?
Yes.
Mr. Brackville?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Cedric?
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy?
No, because we are devastating our lower-income people here in town by removing these transit funds.
Okay. Next item, I believe, is the Bellefonte Borough Fee Schedule. I'm asking for a motion and a second to approve our fee schedule for 2025.
So moved.
Second, Brackville.
Thank you. Questions on the fee schedule? Joanne?
I have two questions. The first one is related-
The first one is related to the authority sewer fees. I see in the schedule that the borough increased sewer fees in 2024 by a dollar per quarter for the first twenty-seven thousand gallons of sewage, and then added an additional three dollars and ten cents for every thousand gallons of sewage over that. That was done last year. Looking at the budget detail we received earlier this evening, the authority brought in three-point-six million dollars through November while spending only two-point-four million dollars. So my question is, why is the authority keeping these sewage rates, fee rates at, uh, the same, including to residents, when they have a one-point-two-three million dollar net income through November of this year, as shown in this budget report? I know we don't set these rates, but I do think that this decision to maintain these rates on everyone is a little bit weird when there's so much of a net income coming in. So the related question, are there plans to use these new reserves for treatment projects on the horizon in the fu, uh, future? Would be helpful to understand their reasoning.
Uh, you are correct. The authority sets the rates and looks at the policies year-round for the expenses. I would just add, it's a multi-million-dollar facility, the, the money they have in reserves is next to nothing should there be a major, uh, repair. The, the prop, the building and the operations were newly built in nineteen-eighty-nine, so they're, they're getting over about forty-some years old, and things are breaking left and right, and that, that's no exaggeration. So, uh, they're trying to, uh, build up and, and spend in repair while have some money in the bank for other unknown repairs. Uh, that, they're definitely, uh, you know, in a, in a difficult position right now. They're not financially sound yet.
So that, that's why I'm asking the question. So it does appear that there is some, uh, a, uh, treatment or maintenance issues that are coming up in the near future that these funds are needed for. That's what I needed to know.
Yes, it's an old facility and it's in, you know, it's in dire need of being upgraded.
Thank you. The second question is, why are we raising the EV parking violation fees by forty percent from twenty-five dollars to thirty-five dollars when there is no change in parking fines for every other parking space in town?
That's an item on one of our agendas.
I don't have the background research on that. I don't know if it's because people aren't paying, or I'd have to get some, do some research. Uh, that, the, that fee or any fee can be changed, you know, or amended throughout the year. If you want to hold till I get some research on that, I'm happy, we're happy to do that.
I would like to see that done because it seems to be unfair.
I think we talked about that at one of our meetings. Go ahead, Chief.
Coming from our parking officer, the fine is lower than what it would cost for a full charge. Apparently, the, the machine can be used at ten hours at three dollars an hour, and people, uh, parking their vehicles there and can leave them there all, all day and all night, and we feel that they're just taking the chance of getting a ticket or not because the ticket's lower than what it costs to fully charge your car. So that's why we upped it to thirty-five or suggested that amount.
I thought we talked about that at one of our meetings.
So we just want people to pay and move on so other people can use it, so.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? If not, we had a motion and a second on the fee schedule, so let's go ahead and vote.
Mr. Bernier?
Yes.
Mr. Brackville?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Cedric?
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy?
Yes.
Next is the service line inventory information that was put out, the update. There's no action required by council. Authorities, boards, and commission vacancies, appointments, and reappointments will be made on January sixth. Again, no council action is requested. Uh, the borough building open house on December fifth. Bellefonte Borough extends a thank you to Wise Market and Giant Foods for the donations to the open house. Next is our new business section. First one is the ratification and approval of the tentative collective bargaining agreement between the Bellefonte Borough and the AFS CME, AFSME, Council eighty-three. The agreement is for a period of January one, twenty-twenty-five, till January, or December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-seven. Need a motion and a second.
So moved. I'll second.
Thank you. Questions or comments? If not, we'll take it to a vote.
Mr. Bernier?
Yes.
Mr. Brackville?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Cedric?
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy?
Yes.
Thank you. The final draft of the Bellefonte Borough Historic District Design Guidelines is submitted for review and approval by Harb. Need a motion and a second for us to approve the updated Bellefonte Borough Historic District Design Guidelines.
So moved.
Thank you. Questions? Ms. Thompson's here and offered an opportunity earlier. Does anybody have any questions for her or about this? If not, we'll go ahead and vote.
Mr. Bernier?
Yes.
Mr. Brackville?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Cedric?
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy?
Yes.
Next item on our new business list is, uh, our Chief Whitmer is requesting to establish a new eligibility list for the Bellefonte Borough Police Department for 2025. Council action is requested. I need a motion and a second to approve Chief Whitmer's request for a new eligibility list for Bellefonte Borough Police Department.
So moved, Johnson.
I'll second it.
Questions? Comments? If not, we'll go ahead and vote.
Mr. Bernier?
Yes.
Mr. Brackville?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Cedric?
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next is borough offices will be closed on Tuesday, December twenty-fourth.
We need the paving list.
Oh, jeez, I missed the paving list. Twenty-twenty-five proposed paving list. The street paving list will go out for bid in January. The final selection of streets to be paved will depend on the priority and cost. I'm asking for a council motion and second to approve this proposed street paving list.
So moved.
Second, Brackville.
Thank you. Any questions regarding the paving list?
Um, I have a question. At this year, the list seems a little bit shorter than normal. Is it because of the, the actual mileage of the streets or its cost of repairs?
It's going to be related to South Spring Street being the number-one street. It's a wide, long street.
Okay.
Like, most of our expenses, our budget, is going to go on that street, so we shorten the list. It's just, uh, the other streets will be, you know, depending on how much budgets, how much left, leftover after that street's budgeted.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Ralph, could I, uh, can we add something into that? If you're, you know, if you're making, if you have a list, could we add something to the list, even though you might not be able to get to it?
Oh, yeah, you can always let us know of a, a street.
I'll let you know because it's the one that's from Badger Street to Ba, Bishop Street.
Uh, Badger to Bishop.
Badger runs between Bishop to...
Bishop, Bishop Street and then...
Badger's perpendicular to Bishop, so which...
From Cherry Lane to Bishop Street.
Okay, Cherry Lane, Badger, Cherry to Bishop. Okay, thank you. We'll put it on the list.
Other comments relative paving? Okay, if not, we'll go ahead and vote.
Mr. Bernier?
Yes.
Mr. Brackville?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Cedric?
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy?
Yes.
Next, borough offices will be closed on Tuesday, December twenty-fourth, and Wednesday, December twenty-fifth, for observance of Christmas, Eve, and Christmas Day. There'll be no refuse collection on Tuesday or Wednesday. Refuse will be collected on Thursday, December twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-four, for Tuesday's route and Friday, December twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four, and for Wednesday's route. This information will be added to the borough website. If anybody has any questions or needs further information, please visit www.bellefonte.net. Automatic calls will be made to remind our Bellefonte residents when their refuse will be collected and when the offices will be closed.
Mr. Bernier?
Yes.
Um, I don't know the answer to this, but what is the process for people to sign up for the automated calls?
The best way is to go to our borough website, bellefonte.net, and, uh, there's a box there. There's a place to sign up. That's the best way of doing it.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next, uh, we're moving on the offices that will be closed on Wednesday, January first, twenty-twenty-five, for New Year's Day. Refugees will not be collected on Wednesday. Refugees will be collected on Thursday, January second. Again, this information will be on our website, and the automated calls will go out. Uh, the borough newsletter deadline, due to the need to obtain information about the tax bill and vendor changes at the county, we will have a firm deadline of January thirty-first for all newsletter information. Um, do we give Mr. Larson a chance to talk? He's here.
We can. I know he normally speaks at the first meetings.
I don't have a report for this meeting.
I didn't want to leave you out.
It's all good, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, we made him sit through this. He didn't have, we didn't even give him a chance to talk, okay. Final section here is the public comment regarding issues that are not on the agenda. Mr. Bechtel? Make sure his mic, Rita, can you make sure his microphone's on, please? Or someone help him out there?
I just wanted to mention, uh, my diecast museum, which I've already, um...
Hey, Mr. Bechtel, you're going to have to speak in front of the microphone so everybody can hear you.
All right. I just wanted to mention before that I, um, pointed out my diecast museum at Bishop and South Spring Streets, and, um, I mentioned that to have the council at some point try to visit my, uh, museum, since it'd be important for them to see it, and, uh, it's, uh, something that is very unique that Bellefonte can offer as a tourist attraction of some kind, and, um, I thought I'd put together a map of downtown and mention, um, what I noticed, that there were about eleven empty, uh, businesses, vacant business, uh, rentable spaces, and, um, I thought, well, uh, that seems to be a high number. To me, I'm not a building planner or anything fancy like that, but, uh, I've, since two-thousand-and-thirteen, since I've been there, um, at that location, I've really struggled to try to get foot traffic to my museum. Um, there's, there's no admission fee, it's free, uh, it's just something that I think, uh, since, uh, Bellefonte's theme is historic, uh, is their, um, kind of their, um, uh, what they want to be known for, and they promote that theme, I thought my diecast museum could play an important part in this town's tourist-related, uh, uh, as a tourist-related business attraction and help increase, uh, downtown traffic, uh, even though my tracks, my, my museum is kind of just one block from downtown, and, um, I thought, well, let me put together a diagram of the empty spaces that I noticed, um, that are, are, uh, to be rented out, and if they were, um, I think that it would help, um, benefit the foot traffic to my museum, and sometime ago, whenever I brought up, mentioned my museum, that I have such a, a, um, historic kind of attraction, um, I thought, you know, I just kind of, uh, just had an idea, just came to me, that I would just put together, you know, a list, um, of, a diagram of what, how many are, are open, anything what's in, like, X, those are empty. So I came up with eleven of them, and, you know, even on Main Street, Allegheny, you've got several, four there, and two, three, four there, so it seems to be leaning heavily on, uh, a number of spaces that are empty. So if they would get, uh, filled and, uh, get, uh, people in them, businesses in them, uh, it would overall help the tourist attraction, the theme that I think is important to Bellefonte. So, uh, as far as, um, since I last mentioned my museum, I haven't seen any, uh, council members that I know of visit the museum, and I've been there since two-thousand-and-thirteen, so I think it's, would be not, uh, it's important that Bellefonte take this opportunity to, as far as zoning and promoting it, um, I can't do anything officially with the, um, I am zoned for, I, I fit into a grandfather clause or something, so I can't be in a guide and I can't officially promote it, but I thought if Bellefonte, since they kind of put forward their, uh, theme as historic district and the things that coming along with that, would be important to my, uh, museum's, um, attraction, and I think it would play an important part in that and tourist activity, um, because, you know, if these businesses were, spaces were filled, they in turn, I would hope, would generate more, uh, more tourists, um, tourists to come in and in turn, hopefully, um, go and, and visit my museum. Um, I just, how the, the borough, Bellefonte wants to do that, technically, I can't do anything, I can just do stuff I've been doing for the last twelve years, and, um, I thought if Bellefonte would fill those, uh, locations, it might help me, um, attract more people to my museum, and I just think Bellefonte's missing out on something that, uh, very unique, and, uh, I don't know of any other place like mine except in New Jersey and possibly York, Pennsylvania. So the place museum, a museum in N- New Jersey is like a state attraction site, so, uh, I think this would be important to Bellefonte and historical-wise, historically-wise, be an attraction, um, for people even outside the borough and, or outside the state, maybe, but I'm tou, my hands are tied as far as what I can do, um, and I know officially I can't be in the guide or, because of zoning, the zoning situation that, uh, I'm in, um, I can just do local, you know, have my, my signs, my flyers, and my business cards, but I just thought if, historic-wise, if Bellefonte, uh, that's their kind of theme, um, if they would, and I just thought, well, let me just do a chart.
Mr. Bechtel, you're limited to three minutes. I gave you about five, so you're going to have to wrap it up, okay?
All right.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you.
So I just wanted to show you the map and diagram I made up of the downtown business area. And I thought my museum would benefit from the borough if they would promote, if they would fill these available spaces and, you know, increase the tourist activity and the historical theme of the Bellefonte and the borough.
Thank you, Mr. Bechtel.
Took me a lot of time to do that.
Are there other? Yes, sir.
Hi, good evening. My name's Phil Brydenball. I'm a resident at 214 North Allegheny Street, but not really hear about residential stuff. I just wanted to thank the borough for support for Victorian Christmas, it was just this past weekend, so it's a good opportunity to come in and see you. Ralph, appreciate the support from the staff, the permits, you know, Matt getting some of the barricades out for us, even on relatively short notice. Appreciate that. Chief Whitmer, I know that Gabby worked to get some bags metered, meters bagged, both on and off, so appreciate that support. Buddy, thanks for another inspirational proclamation. It's annually, you're done. So I do appreciate the support. Also, would appreciate any feedback. You get feedback both yourself or from your constituents. You know, you can get them back on, if you look at our website right now, there's already a link up for feedback. So use it. Let us know what worked well or, you know, what needs to be improved. We'll try to address it. That's it, thanks.
Thank you.
Phil, thank you for everything you do for our community and putting on an incredible event. So thank you for all your time and effort.
It's a, it's a committee effort. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Other comments from the audience? Rita?
I just wanted to say thank you to President Bernier for his year of service. This is your last official meeting, I take it, right?
That's correct, I think. Ralph, how's this work?
Yes, this is your last meeting, as president.
Mr. Johnson?
That was a great Victorian Christmas, by the way. You did it, I, we couldn't find a parking place. That tells you a lot.
As a theme.
So, thank you, thank you, Mayor. I too wanted to say thanks for your work as president. It's been a pleasure working with you. You're not done yet, so keep up the good work.
You're welcome.
And Barbara, congratulations. You've got a year's worth of the driver's seat, so I'll support you as all that I can.
So, is that it? Thank you, Rita, thank you, Doug. Hey, do I need a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting? Because it's not on here.
Yes.
Just saying, after 12 meetings, it's not on here. That's why I don't ask for it. We need to get that put on there. All right, need a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.